That's a good idea. This is, yeah, positions change and we go on.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, second, third, and I?
Aye.
Closed. We are out of urban renewal. And we will move into our city council meeting. I'll call the city council meeting of October fourteenth to order. And we will start with flag salute. Which Councilor Schaub, you please lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilor Cornwell?
Present.
Councilor Cabralis? Councilor Schaub?
Here.
Councilor Wilk?
Here.
Councilor Kentu?
Here.
Councilor Morris?
Here.
Mayor Lonergan? Here. Thank you. I do not have any announcements to make. We do have an appointment. We have a new member I would like to put on the Recreation Park Board, Isabella Baldissari, who it sounds like is a high school member. Jessie just left.
She was on it last year.
Yeah, okay. Entertainer motion or any discussion? So should we just continue on?
Yes. I move to approve Isabella Baldissari as a student member of the Recreation Park Board.
Second?
Second.
Moving second, all in favor, second, third, and I?
Aye.
Opposed with the same? Welcome aboard, Isabella. Do not have any community or government organizations discussions, not have any proclamations. We have presentations. First one is our Hard Castle Shelter update. Good evening.
Good evening. I recognize somebody from our open house, I think. You have familiar faces.
Yes.
Hopefully be on the same page as everyone else here. Got some slides.
Sorry about that, Councilor. All right, go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so I just want to give a really super, super brief background on who we are and what we're sort of in the community. Shelter is founded in Cincinnati first.
Sir, would you give us your name, please?
Oh, yes, sir. My name is Andrew Marshall. I'm the Associate Director of Sheltering for Midland Valley Community Action Agency. The umbrella under that that I work for is the Arches Project. And that is where we work with largely housing and sheltering for those experiencing homelessness.
Thank you.
And so I've been with the agency for about three years. Been in my current role for about, I think, about eight months. So just to get a little bit of background on our agency, we've been around for about sixty years. Came out of the war on poverty, who was Lyndon Johnson back in the nineteen sixties. We are really, our focus is Marionville County and we're beyond the weekend, the weekend assist. And of course, we were excited to come up to Woodburn. I myself am very much a small town person, grew up in a town of one hundred eighty people in East Tennessee. And so I know the fact that you still have the Dairy Queen and an art circle. So I'd like to talk to you on that.
Destination.
Right.
It is, it is. I had been to an art circle since high school and then away to Massachusetts for eleven years, came back. And then we took over the shelter there in Hard Castle, drove by and I just, I felt like I was seventeen. That's a long time ago. And so we really focus on really making sure that we are providing services to everyone. You know, this is this vision of having to care for everybody. Everybody matters. I love that Woodburn is very diverse culturally, ethnically, which is remarkable for a town of the size that has its richness. And so that's something that we definitely raise. So our approach, we are, we try to not be driven by programs, we be driven by need. And so not just have a program because that was a great thing in Chicago, but what is it that a community actually needs here on the ground? And so that is really what, really what drives us and act as a community action. We act as a hub and conduit and organizer of resources and partners, doing things on our own as well, but also trying to connect resources to, to needs and not trying to do everything ourselves. And so some of the services we offer, I think from basic needs with inclement weather and just all the very fundamental things, all the way through housing. Because ultimately, we want to see people not just be safe for a night, but also be safe long term. And moved into sustainability and self-sufficiency. And so I'll just keep us moving along because then we don't have a, have a time and time period where we want to talk about the shelter more than we're going to be used to ensure. We have outreach here in Woodburn as part of what we do in Marionville County. Making sure that we're offering outdoor supplies, food, water, pet supplies, getting them connected to shelter and shelter placements. That's not necessarily just a shelter here in Woodburn, but if you have those, it may qualify for shelter services in Salem. Maybe they will be able to connect to a rapid rehousing program, that kind of thing. We try to be as broad minded as possible, not just in the very short term, but thinking about what other long-term resources we can bring to bear. So again, we talked about a bit of the shelter. So during July heat, that heat wave, the average temperature over one hundred and one degrees, which I'm learning after, I mean, I grew up in, in Oregon, went away, came back, your climate's broken, I'm not sure what's happening. It's really hot here. And so it's something that I had to sort of address too. And so we don't think about having to activate cooling centers quite as often as we do now. And so this this kind of idea, outreach seems about one hundred eighty team hours region wide. One of the things that's great about our, the software that we use when we go out and do service engagements is that it is geotagged. And so to see there, there on the map, it was a little more detailed. If you, I believe the little diagonal thing here along the right side is ninety-nine, but that gives you an idea of where in, where in the city these engagements are taken from. And so it's one of these things that we found to be extremely useful in being able to circle back and find folks that we've connected to, especially since they don't have an address, so they didn't have a place that they would, it would be easier to find. The shelter itself, I know several of you have been to the shelter, like to the, to the open house, so you're somewhat familiar. We have currently, we have space for twenty beds. We are low barrier, which means that we don't expect sobriety and we pets and significant others. And so we try to make it as easy as possible for people to access, access a bed in a safe place. Obviously, we also want to cover those essentials with feeding them, making sure they're able to shower and laundry and all of that. We have onsite case management, which is bilingual, which is great. That happens largely in the evening. We have a lot of, a lot of farm workers that come in and they disappear about four o'clock in the morning and the truck rolls up for them to head out to work. And so we discovered we need to catch them in the evening instead of the morning because by the time case manager rolled out, they had been, they're on the job a couple hours. We're able to engage with, with our folks. We have several on staff that are also bilingual. And so we try to offer as much wraparound as we possibly can. If you have a glance from May through yesterday, thousand five bed nights, it's people in beds. Total ninety individuals served. So ninety seems like a really large number for a small town. But what, one of the things that we're seeing, not just in Salem, not just, not just in Oregon, but just nationally, is that our, the problem of homelessness tends to be outsized of population, right? We have small towns with big town problems, right? Little cities with big city problems. And so it's remarkable that we have ninety individuals. So this is not complicated, but these are ninety individuals that we have, we have served at the shelters since we opened on May first.
Andrew, can I, I did the math when you sent me your presentation earlier. And so that averages out to, from when they opened to October thirteenth, about thirteen, just over thirteen people a night that are using on average the shelter. And obviously, you can see by the graph that it does vary monthly, but it, I just thought, I'd pull that number because I was really curious of the average serving.
Right. And, and we expect that to be, to max out in the summer. If you, if the weather's nice, you have less incentive to, to be inside. When weather changes, that's going to change dramatically. I managed a homeless shelter in metro west Boston prior to coming back to Oregon, and that was a trend we saw all the time in the summer. Bed counts go down in the winter, you know, you're finding them out on the floor somewhere for someone because there's just that much demand. And so we're anticipating this will, this will increase as we get into colder weather. I'm trusting that the Farmer's Almanac is correct this year and that we are going to have a little milder, drier winter. So I'm going to cross our fingers for that. But we are prepared to see an uptick as we get into that, into that cold weather. Just to kind of finish with a success story before you pepper me with questions, as I'm sure you have. One of our success stories was just a couple that had, was very transit, they're trying to get, they're trying to get home and leave, I believe they were headed, headed to Florida, I'm not hundred percent sure. I know it's east coast, but they had, they had come out here for work, worked right up. Things just didn't happen the way they, they thought things were going to unfold. And really, it came about what they needed in order even just to, just to travel. Because even just to get on the bus from New York, right? You can't just, everything, everything is much more complicated when you don't have documentation. And so we were able to help them with getting their IDs and giving them some stability and a place to be, a safe place for every kind of group. And when you have a safe place, it's much easier to tackle the problems in front of you. So you're not, you're no longer in crisis mode, then you can actually get into problem solving. And so with the assistance of our case management and our staff, we were able to overcome that barrier, get them their ID, so that they were then able to, to make the trip and get back to there.
Perfect.
All right. So there's a really quick overview. I'll give a little bit off the cuff here as far as how things are going. They are going pretty well. If never, if you haven't had a chance to, to see the shelter, it'd be great. If you wanted to reach out and, and, you know, we just scheduled a tour. It's something to see. This is, this is the most unique shelter that I've ever been a part of, that I've ever overseen, because it's a tent shelter. Every, every other shelter that I have, and with the other five sites that I manage and oversee, we have, it's all brick and mortar. So the idea of having a tent, it's got a giant HVAC system, a trailer next to it that heats it and cools it, it's pretty dramatic. When they said we're going to tents, I thought, now this is Oregon, it rains, it's kind of cold. But it is the kind of thing that like female rolls out when you have, when you have emergencies. And so it's pretty, it's pretty amazing. The church building itself and what they've done to accommodate the showers and laundry facility, even they got, you have a kitchen, just those things that they've been able to do, it's pretty, it's pretty dramatic. And so things are, things are going well. We get close to capacity these nights, do this every night. We're seeing a lot of folks that are, that are repeat, so we can develop those relationships and really work through some of their obstacles and their barriers, getting them onto housing lists and all of those things that, that are part of that continuum, where we're trying to move them from being homeless into some stability and self-sufficiency and ultimately so that they are in a place on their own, self-sufficient. And so, so we're excited, again, I'm excited about, about being in Woodburn with this shelter. Like I said, I'm a small town, small town kind of guy. And, and there's something very, very sweet about Woodburn. I think people already know this, because you live here, you're invested in being in this council. But there is, there is something unique in, even with the shelter. The folks come in, their demeanor, their attitudes, the staff that we've hired locally, their demeanor, their, their attitudes, is there's a, there's a level of compassion, a level, a level of authenticity that is challenging in a bigger city. I'll just compare that to some of our, you know, we hire for our other shelters in Salem and just even the folks that come in. There is a, there is a, it's hard to describe. It's, it's strange maybe to call a culture of a shelter kind of sweet, but there's a sweetness to the culture of the Woodburn, the Woodburn shelter.
Any questions from the?
Do you mind if I point out a few quick things? Because there's just, this is just an amazing success story and it kind of even goes further back. Even when the previous group was overseeing it, the city wasn't even invested in it then, right? We actually assisted the, that group with receiving a $400,000 grant, which aided to those improvements in which Andrew spoke too, with the showers and things like that. So the city hasn't been invested in the, the houseless issue and problem here in Woodburn for quite some time and, and supporting with, you know, Jamie Stafftime who helped get that grant at that time. And then I also want to point out that, you know, we, the city was able, and the city leadership, by providing the additional funding through ARPA to really help get Mid Willamette established and really take care of some of those barriers that they, they saw. I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, I apologize. But investing what we did in our ARPA funding is, is paying off in the community tenfold. Kind of a rough number, I don't remember the exact number, but when they initially gave us operational cost for this facility, it was over $700,000 a year that they're investing, Mid Willamette is investing into our community. So for us to give that seed funding, we are seeing it tenfold, let alone the community good in which it's doing. And it seems to be, from a staff perspective, very successful. I've heard very little negative comments about the shelter. And if you haven't gone, I showed up right at post kind of service hours and kind of once everyone went on their way. And it looks brand new as, as it was an open house. I couldn't believe it. And it just, I'm so impressed with Mid Willamette and the work they put in. And in, in addition, they're continuing to invest in Woodburn and trying to secure federal funds to actually move the, you know, Mid Willamette doesn't see the tenting situation as permanent. It doesn't, it's not the way, the model that they want to do. And so they're actively trying to target funds so they can move the sheltering indoor. One of the limitations now with that facility is it's not sprinkled, so it doesn't meet the commercial guidelines in which to do indoor sheltering unless in an emergency situation. And so to have an amazing group like these folks going after those federal funds to do that and then eventually move those, move their clients into the indoor space is going to be fantastic. So I just wanted to give Andrew and the team some additional kudos as well as give some of that brief history because I think it's been a whirlwind over these past few years and, and we've really tried to be very conscientious of how we're going about targeting some of these issues. So I'll open it up for questions and you guys can ask Andrew.
Well, first, thank you, Jessie. I, I think it's been an excellent partnership that you've brought on along with Andrew and Mid Willamette. Certainly, the city has had a lot of involvement in this, but it's, everything I have seen has been good too. And it has been a well-run operation. But comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I sort of feel like I want to add that when we were, were talking about sort of the change in the management, there was some community feedback and concern, as, as you would expect to have about this type of a facility in a residential area. And Community Action really took the lead in reaching out and talking to community members, walking the neighborhood. I know they're very quick to be responding to issues that arise on scene and in the neighborhood, which has gone a long ways to building a lot of community support. From concerns to support, I think is, it's been good to see that. And I just, I know it's anecdotal, but the number of calls from community members and from neighborhood concerns that come to my office have basically ceased. I haven't had anybody express a concern to me about your op, the operation at the shelter since really quite a long time. I think the last concerns we heard were at a public meeting when we were contemplating moving forward this project, but it was more consistent in terms of the concerns and the issues we're grappling with prior to Midland Valley. So that's just really, you know, a great, I think a great step. And it, you know, I like to say that Midland Valley took the baton and carried forward with the mission and the purpose. And so, you know, there's been a lot of, a lot of hands and a lot of hearts involved in the program for some time, but it seems that it's overcoming this, continuing to move forward. So I do thank you for that. It's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to, to run, I know.
Thank you. Councilor Morris is someone that might have close eyes on the project. Do you have any input?
Is that a blind, is that a blind joke, Mr. Mayor?
Not, not intended.
Thank you. If it was, it was a good one, I appreciate that. Hey, so I, I appreciate the work that's being done across the street at the shelter. I think my biggest concern is the feedback I'm getting from my neighbors and my own feedback is that people have given up calling on issues that are happening in the neighborhood. I think it would be good to go out and do a survey of the neighbors again, to go back and get their feedback because as of last week, I got some pretty significant feedback from a neighbor that was not warm and fuzzy, was the right way to describe it, being scared, being concerned, having some real interactions with people that were not positive. So, and, and I want it to be successful as any project that we have in the city. But just like these guys are tracking all their data, I think it's important that the city has data around how the, how the neighbors are feeling. And that's a hard data point to collect without going door to door. But just in my, my brief interactions with people, people, fences are going up and it's just a whole different vibe. I, I got people shuffling through my, my recycling bin, which if you've been to my house, I'm like about a hundred and fifty feet off the road and people are walking down my driveway. And so the, while the report tonight is great, it sounds good, we're serving people and stuff, I could tell you the vibe in the community, people just got tired of calling. And I appreciate the fact that Scott's not getting a lot of complaints. I think people just said, hey, it's like potholes or speeding, you know? So there's no, nobody's doing anything about it, so I'm not going to bother calling. So I'll encourage people to call and make reports and stuff as I normally do, but I, I think we need to, and you won't hear me talking about it much longer because I'm not going to be around much longer, but I think it's important we keep a finger on what's going on and not just hear from the shelter itself, but the community. Because the community is what pays our bills, so that would be my comment.
Councilor Morris, as you move on to other challenges, we will always care what you as a concerned citizen or a neighbor thinks. So please feel free to stay in touch with us and keep us informed.
You're never going to see me again.
It's also a great idea to reach back out to the community and neighborhoods. I think that was very effective at the forefront of the project and continuing that outreach, particularly those people who are most directly affected in the presence of the shelter, I think, is really a good idea. Community Action's done a great job with that, you've got good resources for that.
Yeah, we'll definitely follow up on that. That's a, that's a concern. One of the things we pride ourselves in is that if you pride pass most of our shelters, you have no idea what you should. Over our shelters in Salem, one of the first things that, when I was hired on, was our first hotel to shelter conversion in a row of hotels, and the nicest hotel in the block is our shelter. And so I, you know, we did a lot of pride in, in what our community, our neighbors. I'm used to going to community or to neighborhood association meetings and that kind of thing because we want to be as, as immediate as possible. So if there are things that are coming up, we want to, we want to be active, we want to overcome those challenges.
Comments, questions?
I have a couple of questions. So one of the things that happened when Mid Willamette came in was the conversion from what had formerly been a day shelter to now an overnight shelter. And so, and my understanding is that you house people overnight and then they have to leave. So there may be more foot traffic in the neighborhood just because the shelter isn't available for them. And so I'm wondering if you have seen some additional need around a place during the day for homeless people to be? And if so, if you have thoughts about how to address that?
Well, I know long term, we would like the shelter to be like our other shelter, to be our 24/7 operation. And that gives people a place to be that isn't, you know, wandering the neighborhood, where they, they have a place to kind of be anchored. And of course, that's all part of the, as Jessie mentioned, the social, the long range kind of goals. There's a lot of things that has to go with that, obviously, funding, so we can be staffed that entire time, you know, find a location that we can do that in. But that is definitely very much on our radar. I know that was a concern when we first came in, it's a goal was that this shift of, you know, where they're going to be during the day. Now, you know, certainly that does kind of change the dynamic of how things operate. And so I know that, that our long-term goal is to have a 24-hour operation, which would then be a lot of that just, you know, folks not having a place to be. And so that is, that is definitely very much, very much on our radar.
Well, and I think about it in terms, at one point you were talking about the, the hot weather that we've had here and that doesn't happen overnight, that happens during the day. And that's probably, from a health and safety perspective, the most critical time for people to be not in the sun. And, and I understand that you did open for some period of time during those hundred degree. That's commendable. My second question is whether you have plans, and it may be premature to discuss them at this point, but for converting from the tent situation to a, to a more durable model for housing?
That's certainly, that's certainly in the works. It's a little bit above my pay grade as far as like with, as far as really more at our CPM on an executive level, as far as where they are. I know that, that is, that is something we're working toward. What that looks like timeline, where we are, all those things, I get looked in usually when I tell them, hey, we've got this, this initiative, this is what we're doing. And, you know, I'm given, I'm given the task award and making it happen.
Councilor, they do not own the property, the city doesn't, by the church, that they share that property of the church. That, and I was going to, going to say, I know that they appreciate the way you've taken care of, they still do service on Sunday.
Yep.
And it's been a very good relationship with them. But yeah, there's some other things that need to be worked out before.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I know it's not part of the shelter operation, but the other aspect too that I think has been quite helpful to this has been compliance with the Oregon Legislature who put restrictions on cities that mirrored the Ninth Circuit court ruling prior to it being overturned by the Supreme Court, the law remains in place. So the shelter does provide Woodburn Police Department with more tools and grappling with situations involving homeless people elsewhere in the community. And I know that other areas of the city, those issues have been largely addressed because of the shelter. And plus, it gives, like I say, our officers when they respond, a few more tools to work with. So although I know that there are some more directly impacted neighborhoods closer to the shelter where people are congregating, I think those can be, hopefully those can be better managed, but I do think you have the ability to do that. Overall, the, the city's involved in an effort to address those issues, I, I think has been a success. And we feel pretty good about telling our story because of that, other communities that continue to struggle with the issue.
And I just want to point out, I think it was, it was great by city leadership as well. If you look at surrounding communities, they just took a, they took a very different approach, some of them did, of addressing that, the same concern that Scott just mentioned. And, and so some are just have a overnight parking facility in their city hall parking lots and things like that. They're not providing wraparound services. So there's always room for growth and it sounds like there's growth that can be made in this situation, absolutely. But just providing actual res, additional resources, you wouldn't see success stories out of having people park overnight in a parking lot, right? They weren't getting services, they're not moving on, they're not getting permanent housing. And so just the initial kind of wraparound is, is so significant. So hopefully, some of those items can be addressed and can be taken on.
So I know that you do not accept anybody that's visibly intoxicated or, or, you, you're likely using drugs or anything?
Well, if they are, if they're, it's really about behavior. So if someone, if someone can manage their behavior, even if they are under the influence, then the absolute will take them.
They will take them.
And give them a safe list. It is only if, if their behavior is such that it would be detrimental to those around them, in which case then, then we would have to then figure out a different, a different option for them. But, you know, we try to bring in anyone that possibly can have symptoms.
So obviously, your people have to be trained on how to recognize and how to handle those people. Also, with homelessness, there's a mental health aspect that also can be a problem at any given time. So, you know, I appreciate, again, the, the training you people go through. Go.
The community is a little bit concerned insofar as, yes, we're getting homeless.
The community is a little bit concerned insofar as yes, we're getting homeless, houseless people sheltered for, you say 90 individuals? And you talk about resources. What's the goal? Are, are we looking to get these people able to place them in jobs? I mean, you have them contacted those that are there during the day. Is that to have them find jobs or are we just making sure there's a roof over their head when they need it? You know, what are the resources? What, what is our goal for the individuals?
Well, the, well, it is, the goals are as, as individual and diverse as the individuals themselves. Ultimately, we would love to see it work out. And obviously when you look at them by really on an individual, by individual basis, you know, some have the capacity to, to work and find, find a job, toward paying market rent. Then there are others, as we mentioned, you know, we deal with folks that are suffering from mental illness and, and additional. And for those folks, you know, maybe more toward permanent support housing or finding, certainly encouraging them to get into treatment and to seek recovery. And so depending on their particular obstacles, you know, really what the outcome and success is for them looks like is going to be, is going to be different. Ultimately, we want self-sufficiency and that's really what we're looking for.
Have you, have any of your clients found jobs as far as you know? Have they moved on beyond?
Yeah, we have, the, we have, I can't pull the number, the number off my head. But several have, have moved on to get reconnected family, we had those that have established employment. One of the things that is part of case management for those folks that are working is really helping with budget, right? Helping them with having some level of self-accountability and being the managed resources that they do have, or we'll try to connect them to additional resources. And so we try to, you know, take an individual approach, very client-based, because everybody comes to us with a, with a different set of challenges. And so I would love it if there was, if we had a panacea, right? We had, if we had just a, something that we could do, one, one solution that could solve it all, but unfortunately, the, the challenges that folks have are as, as unique as, as the individuals themselves. But ultimately, to answer your question, it's really towards self-sufficiency and whether that's in, in a, in a, in an environment where they have more supports or in an environment where they can be fully independent and without any subsidies, without any supports, whatever that looks like. And just to build on a little bit, I have a, I've spent some time in workforce development in the past. And so one of the things I would love to see us be able to do, and one boss is going to smack me back, they're saying this, one of the things that I would love to see, see us be able to do would be to be building in more of that, that requires connections and funding and how things go into, those kinds of programs as well. But certainly that is, if that's a part of self-sufficiency, you know, whatever we can do to build that, then that's.
So Counselor, I'm somewhat familiar with Community Action too, and their ultimate goal is end homelessness. Now realizing that that's a big task and they can't do it by themselves. But in Salem, they have several different levels that try to do that with different housing combinations from single mothers to, to boys, to, to families. There currently is waiting lists on some of those hundreds to get into it. And so it's, it's, there's a financial issue here too. But Community Action does have, have trained advisors and consultants that do work with people that, that do try to get them back in the street for those that want to and are willing to work it. And it's, that's an ongoing process. Anything else? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate the update. Jesse, thank you for all of your help too and oversight.
Thank you to city leadership. It's a great project.
Yeah, it really is. Thank you. Moving on, we have another presentation of some members that have moved into our city that we do not want. The Oregon Department of Forestry is going to tell us about the very evil ash borer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll introduce our guests from the Department of Forestry, Jim Rao, Assistant City Administrator. We're fortunate to have Kat Bethia and Matt Mills from the Oregon Department of Forestry here to talk about this cute little bug that apparently is extremely insidious and has made its way into Marion County and Woodburn, the Woodburn area in particular. So they're going to spend a little bit of time talking about what this is and what, what can be done about it. And then also wanted to mention that we're in the process of applying for a pretty significant grant from the Department of Forestry. It's actually due tomorrow to do, to take on actually a number of projects, including work around the Emerald Ash Borer issue. Ramada, Renata is working on that grant and is intimately familiar with it and wants to give a little bit of an update at the end of the ODF presentation. So, and I've, and for Kat and Matt's information, I did hand out a couple of flyers that you sent out earlier. So the council members have, have those, kind of show and describe the, the borer. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kat and Matt.
Excellent. Hi, thank you so much, Woodburn. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Excellent. I'm going to share my window and I'll get us started on this. Like you all were saying, there are some bad bugs moving into the Woodburn area. So we're going to talk tonight about managing Emerald Ash Borer. Like Jim announced us, my name's Kat Bethia. I am an Emerald Ash Borer Support Specialist. So I get to give bad news to cities all throughout Oregon. And my coworker, Matt Mills, is here as well. So tonight, we're going to do a very quick introduction into history in case this isn't familiar. If you're from the Midwest, this might actually sound very familiar. We're going to talk about what the state of Oregon has done so far, talk about signs and symptoms at the end, because we have a limited time today. But then we're going to talk about management, which is probably the thing you're most interested in. And then we'll have a section for question and answer at the end. So Emerald Ash Borer is a wood-boring beetle in the Agriless family. And it is a destructive wood-boring beetle that comes from China. It has devastated the Midwest and it kills ash trees and other trees and the member Alaciae. The reason why it kills trees in our part of the country and not in its native range is because they did not grow up together, they did not co-evolve any kind of resistance. And the other trees that we're talking about are a little bit less common, it's white French tree and olive trees. So the way it kills trees in the ash family is that the larva actually feeds underneath the bark. You can kind of see a picture here of the galleries. And then as the tree is girdled, it can no longer bring those nutrients up and down from the tree in the roots and that will kill the tree. So as you can see, we liken this to wildfire. It's a slow-moving wildfire, but in the past 20 years, it has killed over 100 million ash trees. They actually believe it is the most devastating forest pest that we have in the United States, period. So here in 2002, you can see it was discovered in Michigan. They think it came on with shipping pallets. Probably actually came much before then, probably in the late 90s. But it's a very hidden bug for the first couple of years of infestation. So it has moved rapidly. These are five-year increments and you can see as it spreads to the Midwest, then it hits kind of the east coast and then the east coastal region. In 2013, it was discovered in Colorado. It actually jumped a federal quarantine to do so. And now in 2022, it was discovered in Forest Grove, Oregon by an ecologist who was dropping off his kids at daycare and he looked up and saw it and he was like, oh no, this is going to be a big problem. So in Oregon currently, we've actually discovered it in another three counties. So it, the initial quarantine was in Washington County only. And then unfortunately, we have discovered it in Niantic, Plaquemines and Marion County. And if you're wondering how quickly EAB can naturally spread on its own, it, the longest flyers can probably fly, can fly up to 10 miles. Most do not fly that distance. So if you're wondering how something gets from Colorado or from the Midwest to Oregon, the answer is humans. We most likely, the most likely explanation is it made its way through infested wood, such as firewood. And that's why kind of this is a critical component, is education. So what is this going to do to your city? This is a photo before and after of Forest Grove. All of these were ash trees. You can see these are mature tree sizes. In April, they had to be removed. And so what you had was a tree that was well shaded and cool. Instead, now you have a hot city street that has no areas for kids to play in. You don't see, you can see that the temperatures in this area, like just from the photos and how much more bright the sun is, temperatures increased significantly. In Oregon, though, we have been preparing for a while. We knew the writing was on the wall because of how this pest has spread. It has never been eradicated from a single state it has been introduced to. So basically, your only option is management and containment and trying to slow the spread. So prior, from like about 2005 to 2013, we had an active trapping series. That was a relationship between us and some federal departments and unfortunately, traps are not ideal. They are not very attractive to EAB and they can kind of have a creation of false negatives. So you believe that there's nothing in your area when you could have traps. Out of the over 1,300 traps we have placed, only seven have been positive. Knowing that traps were kind of this issue, they are better than nothing. In 2018, Oregon created the Emerald Ash Borer Readiness and Response Plan. Once it kind of got close to us in Colorado, that was a time for us to jump to action. And this was created with support from numerous other local and state agencies. This plan was actually revised again in 2021 before we knew EAB was here. So one of the things and key components we did was create a genetic legacy project where we collected Oregon ash seed. Department of Forestry, my department, set about collecting seeds from Oregon ash throughout the state. And this is one of the largest areas that the Midwest told us they wished they could have done. When we are looking at the mortality rates of Oregon ash trees specifically, we are looking at upwards of a 99% mortality rate. This will decimate our population. And we want to have those genetics for hopes in the future for resistance trials. So then, once it was discovered in 2022, because of our readiness plan, we were able to shoot off into action. Those trees, like you saw, were removed. And visual surveying and trapping increased throughout the Willamette Valley. There was a protocol called slowing ash mortality, which began. And you can see here in 2023, we released biocontrol. Now biocontrol is just one component of management and we're going to go into that a little bit later. We also have an Oregon invasive species hotline, which is operated by ODA, ODF, and specifically entomologists. And it is a one-stop reporting hotline that anyone in the state can report to if they suspect that they have an invasive pest. Unfortunately, the timeline does not stop there. This year, we have found additional infestations, which were found in the Puke Creek watershed. This is the infestation that can, that is impacting you as well. As we found these positives, one was found through a trap. It was actually one of those seven traps. The other report was actually over the county line in Marion County. And that was actually a PG&E lineman who we had trained earlier, who he was doing tree work, saw some signs and symptoms and said, oh no, I think this is EAB. And then when we went out here, ODF and ODA put out visual surveys. We've been going around in giant blocks and that is how it was discovered in Woodburn. So when we're looking at a community scale timeline, the reason why we are talking about this delay in, it was introduced in the 90s and then it was discovered in 2002. It was probably introduced a decade ago here and it's being discovered now. That's because we were currently in this green zone. At the beginning, since this is a wood-boring beetle and it is hiding underneath the bark, it is very, very difficult to find. We do see this trend in the first three to five years where the EAB population is pretty low community-wide. And so your ash mortality isn't really noticed. The beetle population, if you think about it, is kind of building up in these trees and they're spreading very quietly. However, as we kind of go into this yellow segment, years six through 10, the EAB population has also grown exponentially and we are starting to see wide-scale ash mortality. It is not uncommon for 20% of your ash tree population to die each year in this yellow range. Unfortunately, once we reach the red part of the curve, these later infestation, your costs for your urban forestry spike because there's both a very heavy community infestation and you also have dying trees that you are going to have to remove and replace as ash trees become incredibly dangerous when they die. Depending on your ash population, this purple is kind of what happens after. And we want to think about this as a whole process. Because one of the reasons why the ash EAB was so devastating in the Midwest is because of a previous pest. These, we have about 10 new invested, potential infestations that happen each year in our state. Our entomologists keep track of it. And we are very fortunate that, that due to the actions, we are able to decrease those down to having only one or two maybe establish. But this is going to be a continual cycle with a different species. So there are three types of ash trees in Oregon that we're really concerned about. The first one is natural areas. Obviously, when we're talking about the watershed that we're founding in, this is where we found this infestation originally, which are your riparian corridors. And these are things that like border agricultural lands. Ash are also found very commonly in urban areas. Now I did look, I did take a little sneak peek at your city code and it does say that two ash species have been prevented from being planted since that was adopted. But whatever ash trees that might have been legacy species might still be in your urban forest. They were very common right-of-way in yard trees because they have really pretty fall foliage. And they were also very hardy trees until now. And then third is what we call a wildland urban interface site. That's kind of when you think about your house abutting to a natural area. You both have a riparian site, but then you have the risks of urban sites. So we kind of break those three apart for management. So a real quick, brief overview, this isn't trying to be your science 101 class, but your riparian areas have a very fragile ecosystem. Ash trees are an essential component. Anyone like hiking, anyone like fishing? If you like drinking uncontaminated water, all of that's going to be impacted by ash and ash die-off. So you can see here that, you know, bordering agricultural land, ash trees do a lot of importance filtering. They have a really important role in preventing flooding. A lot of water is being stored in ash trees and as they die, they release that water, which means that floods typically increase and so, as does your local water table. Just things to think about. And then there's also a huge component on your fish habitat, both with your waterways eating up, but then also with the loss of habitat for fish. In urban areas, we commonly see it planted along streets, in parks and on private property. Ash trees are essential green infrastructure that provide multiple benefits. They provide shade, stormwater retention, air pollution removal, and they also provide a very important factor. We were talking about heat in the last presentation. In urban areas in Oregon, they have found that having a well-canopied neighborhood versus a poorly canopied neighborhood can be as much as a 20-degree difference. So if you're thinking about a nice lovely 80-degree day versus 100-degree day, that's a fairly large effect that everyone will feel in your city. Woodburn city code, like I said, has prohibited planting of two ash species, but anything that has previously been there is to be thought about. In Woodburn, these are the positive trees that we have found so far. So this visual survey data is preliminary. We have found the dark red spots are confirmed positive. They have signs of adult exit holes, which means that the beetle has been in that tree for at least one year, if not two. And the orange spots, as you can see in, that are kind of coming further from the eastern side of your map, you are on the edge of the infestation, if not in the middle of the infestation. This is actually a photo of one of your local park trees that has EAB. And you can see the canopy die-offs that we're seeing in that top photo right there. So there's different stages to management planning. Think of this like any other issue. It sounds like you all have a robust system for handling other issues in the cities. So think about how you would handle your wildfire preparation. Think about how you're handling right now, it sounds like, houselessness population. Depending on where you are in the problem, there are different steps to take. So before you have discovered EAB, we usually recommend that people build up their networks. As you can see, Kurt here is, is here tonight and I'm sure is going to have some information in the grant portion. Like Renata has been like furiously typing for a very quick grant turnaround. That's the type of thing we're talking about with building networks and capacity. When we're talking about policy, it's good to review if you have, you know, what's on the books for handling tree removals. You're going to want to look at how you're supporting your citizens. Because there are some costs associated with this. When it comes to inventory, that is something that the state can actually help provide you with. We run a free software for you. It wasn't free for us, but we provided it at a free cost and we can do trading. One of the basic tenants of being part of Tree City USA or being part of a, managing your urban forest is knowing what you have. The best way to plan for your ash trees is to know what you actually have. The best way to plan for your ash trees is to know what you actually have on your streets. And I believe that is a component of Renata's grant. So I'm sure we'll get to hear about that as well later. Part of inventory is risk assessment. You will, uh, hope my coworker Matt is going to talk about risk and ash trees in a later segment. Unfortunately for you all, we are at the after E A B discovery point. And so as trading education, that is what we're doing here tonight. We have also been in communication with some of your other members of your city and we'll continue to be, uh, as this winter progresses. Communication is really important, not only from us, the state to you, but also how are you going to talk to your citizens, um, about this? When members of the public reach out to you and ask questions, you want to be able to answer them and not be able to just kind of endlessly cycle. Surveying and detection is how you find more E A B. Um, the state does do a survey and detection format, but it is in larger grids and you might be more interested in exactly how many trees in your area have E A B. And then we're going to talk about removals and treatments, uh, and the rest of the management plans in just a minute. So the financial implications, I know this is the worst part for a lot of cities. E A B is expensive. It, it truly is. This is the cost breakdown that has been seen in other states. As you can see, as time goes on, costs dramatically increase with E A B. Strategy can help you manage this and this can help you offset costs. A lot of the Midwestern states were really unfortunate in that they did not have time to adequately plan or prepare. And they found this several decades after E A B had already been found on their shores. Uh, this accounts for emergency tree removal costs, things like insecticide treatments, replanting costs, liability and increased staff time. On average, cities spend three times more at the peak of their E A B infestation than just your normal operating conditions. So by acting proactively, we have a plan that can help you flatten this cost curve. And we're actually going to look at Ottawa's cost and how they did that in just a second. So, um, Ottawa and other parts of Canada have also experienced this. This is a curve, this is their graph, uh, and you can see that this line right here is the break-even point. The dark red line is if you do nothing. The black line is what they actually managed to do. And then that blue arrow, they ended up spending ten point nine million dollars, um, was they were able to span that over a cost of a decade. When we're talking about policy, the first one is stop planting all ash and remove all ash from approved planting lists. You need to work with different departments and also consider how your city is going to handle homeowners all wanting to remove these trees at the same time. Which once again takes us back to capacity. Once again, we talked about tree inventory. You can't manage what you can't have. The software is called Tree Platter and I believe Renata is going to bring that up in the grant. So I will actually stop sharing my screen now. My coworker Matt is going to take over and talk about management options.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Doing this free or is it somehow still forgets? I'm just going to jump up to my part of the presentation. All right, is that showing the, uh, yeah, it looks like it's showing one of these, you know? So, uh, Kat talked about inventory and that's basically going tree by tree and taking measurements of the tree and the location of the tree and information on the general health of the tree. And you do that for as many trees in your community as you possibly can. The more trees you do, the more complete inventory you have and the more information you're going to have to be able to address E A B or a future pest that could come through and wipe out a completely different species. Lots to look forward to. But once that inventory is complete, uh, you can start looking at your options for what you can do with those trees. Uh, this, these are your basic three options. The first is remove and replace. Uh, this has the highest upfront costs, meaning it's going to cost you the most in the beginning. But it gives you the most control over your, you're going to manage that urban canopy and the risk associated with dying ash trees. Uh, another option is to treat those trees. We'll get back around to it, but there are different kinds of chemistries that can actually kill the larvae of the E A B and the adults as they feed on the trees. Uh, this can actually be a pretty cost-effective measure. And, uh, reduces a lot of risk. You're not going to have to worry about those trees dying. It's coming from the beetle and falling down. And the final option is to do nothing. Costs very little upfront, but as those trees begin to die, the costs add up quickly as they start falling down and need to be dealt with. And in the long run, can actually be the most expensive option over the course of infestation, especially when those trees are closed to home for infrastructure. Uh, I do want to take a, start out by reiterating that E A B will kill your ash trees. All North American and European ash trees are highly susceptible to E A B. Once a tree is infested, it will die in about three to seven years. And it's something like one in ten thousand trees will actually survive an E A B infestation in longer than ten years. Ash trees hold a lot of water in their wood when they're alive, but as soon as they die or even start to decline, they begin to lose that moisture and the wood becomes very brittle. We were just at a conference with professional arborists last week and the safety standard for ash trees is not to climb an ash tree with more than thirty percent canopy decline. Um, so at that point, you have to bring in a bucket truck or a crane to deal with the dead, dead or dying tree. And removing a dying ash tree can cost twice as much as a healthy one and a dead one can cost three times as much. Uh, if it, so option number one is to do nothing. In an area where it's an individual tree or a small stand of trees, where it's unlikely to fall into a person, an infrastructure, a vehicle or a building, leaving it standing might be the best option. Uh, the forest in that area will die, which means the loss of the shade from the canopy and the water and the soil retention from the roots. Uh, your overall, uh, your overall environment is going to suffer because of that, but eventually things will grow into its place. Uh, keep in mind, these trees will become infested and die. And once they do, they will become brittle and hazardous. So if you have plans in an area where there's currently an ash stand to do some restoration or management for some infrastructure in the future, uh, if that, if those ash trees die, that, that work is going to become more expensive because it's going to be dangerous to work underneath them. Another thing to keep in mind is that, uh, in Oregon, we have to worry about wildfire. In the east coast, summertime wildfires are really uncommon. Uh, so there hasn't been a lot of research done on this, but in Oregon, we have dry summers. Ash trees burn very easily. Uh, even, uh, a green ash tree can, can be burned. So we're going to have these, we're going to have these stands of dead ash trees. We really need to consider the potential that they could catch on fire and then spread to a larger area. Option number two is to remove and replace. In areas where there is a high risk of a tree dying and then falling on infrastructure or property, removal replacement might be a good option. Uh, trees that are under six inches at, at, at diameter, at chest height or trees that are compromised because of a, a big crack in the bark or, or bad branch structure, those aren't good options for treatment. So removal and replacement might be the best thing to do at that point. Uh, good thing about removals is they can be planned ahead of time, uh, ahead of the infestation wave and be staged to occur over the course of several years. You may decide that to remove twenty percent of non-treatable trees each year as a way to spread the cost of that removal replacement out. Uh, replacement removes, uh, replace, remove trees with appropriate alternatives and increase the diversity of the stand or your, your, uh, your streets that are aligned with ash trees. You want to be sure to plant a mix of climate tolerant species. As we've learned from E A B and ash, if a tree is lined with all, all the same species and an invasive insect or pathogen comes through, that entire urban canopy will be lost because there's, there's nothing to fill it in. And it's important to remove ash trees before they are hundred percent, hundred percent dead. Uh, dead ash, as we said before, dry out quickly and become brittle. They're dangerous to work around and work underneath and they become more expensive to remove. And, um, in some cases, you can actually sell some of that lumber. We'll get back to that later, but, uh, not everywhere. Some places have been able to utilize those trees as they come down, uh, sell that wood and use to help fund programs for replacement. Uh, the final treatment option is, um, to actually treat the tree with an pesticide. There's a bunch of chemistries out there right now to treat trees with, that are infested with E A B or prevent them from being infested with E A B. There's a couple of different ways to apply these pesticides, but I'm just going to focus on the one that over and over again, research has shown to be the best method. And this is what's called a trunk injection, injection of Mammectin Benzoate. Uh, a licensed pesticide applicator will go around the base of a tree. They'll drill small holes in the tree and then they'll use a pump system to inject that tree with, with Mammectin Benzoate. Uh, this, this chemical is very effective at killing E A B. It'll kill ninety-five percent of larvae, uh, within a couple of weeks of injection. The injections need to be done about every two to three years. Some of the other chemistries and application methods need to be done annually. So being, uh, being able to treat a tree every two to three years is actually very, pretty cost-effective. Uh, and these treatments will occur in late spring or early summer after the tree is leafed out. One thing to consider is, um, what other creatures living in your environment are going to be affected by any kind of pesticide you use? The nice thing about Mammectin Benzoate is it's injected into the tree. So you don't have to worry about the wind carrying it off and affecting your pollinators or beneficial insects. And like I said, this is done in the spring after ash trees are done flowering. So the chances of it getting to your bee population are really low. And ash trees are actually wind pollinated as well. So it's very unlikely Mammectin Benzoate, Benzoate will be able to make its way to a positive, uh, a positive insect species or a pollinator. Uh, this work does need to be done by licensed, trained and experienced pesticide applicators. If it's done at too low of a rate, it's ineffective and the tree won't be protected. And if it's over applied, there are safety concerns to both the applicator, the tree and the local environment. There are a couple of companies that create these, uh, trunk injection systems and a few more that sell the, the pesticide itself, Mammectin Benzoate. They are more than happy to, to come out and train your city staff how to use this equipment. If you're treating maybe just a couple hundred trees with Mammectin Benzoate each year, it might be more cost-effective to hire a, a arborist to do that work. But if you're going to treat, treating many more trees than that every year, it might be more cost-effective to train your own staff, get the proper licenses and the proper equipment. And these trunk injection systems cost about two, three, two to three thousand dollars per unit and can be used over and over and over again. And the, the chemicals really aren't that expensive either. Uh, another thing to keep in mind is if you are removing and replacing trees or if you're deciding to wait for the trees to become infested and then cut them down at that point, you're going to have a lot of excess wood material that you're going to have to figure out what to do with. On the east coast, the cities where like around Michigan and Ohio that were hit first, they didn't know what they were dealing with until it was too late. And they did not have the, the city staff or the resources to take down these trees fast enough. So they just had stockpiles of wood or even sometimes standing dead trees for years because they just did not have the infrastructure to deal with it. So before your trees start dying, now's the time to start planning what you can do with all this wood waste. Uh, one option is to chip it and by chip rate, chipping it, you're making the wood so small that the beetle can't survive. That's a good way to start, but eventually you're going to run out of places to put wood chips. Uh, another option is to burn it, either in large piles or there's something called an air curtain incinerator, which has a really low pollution rating. Uh, it can be ninety, it can lower pollution by ninety-three percent as compared to an open burn. Uh, you can create a product called Bio Char, which is a great soil additive, can actually, uh, be a beneficial outcome. Uh, some places are, are splitting the wood into firewood. Problem with that is somebody could take that firewood out of the county and then they're spreading E A B around even more if it's not burned quickly. Uh, and some places they're able to utilize this urban wood from the ash trees to create things like furniture and toys and, um, baseball bats and canoe paddles, things like that. In Marion County, uh, they have a really interesting program where the local arborists and the public works department will take urban woods to the Marion County Juvenile Justice Center. And the folks there will actually process that wood into usable products. So that might be something to look out to and try to make a connection with the Marion County Juvenile Justice Center as an option for what you could do with this wood waste. How about that? The presentation is not wanting to move. There we go. Uh, another thing you want to start doing now is public education. It's a good time to start reaching out to the citizens of your city and letting them know what E A B is and what it is definitely going to do to their ash trees. So they can start planning now and save some costs in the long run. And also keep an eye out for this thing as it spreads throughout the city of Woodburn. Um, as Kat said before, now's the time to stop planting ash and adjust, adjust your tree code and so that people cannot plant ash because this is going to get infested and be a problem in a few years. Connect with community, community partners like Jim Rowe and Renata are doing, uh, with our Marion, Yamhill, Clackamas Counties work group. Uh, we're going to be meeting on November twenty-first to start talking about how these different organizations can start working together and tackle this problem. And the last thing to do, there is a quarantine in, um, in Marion, Clackamas, Yamhill and Washington Counties. And ash materials cannot leave these counties. Uh, and there's a ten thousand dollar fine for anybody caught bringing ash material outside of the quarantine zone. And this quarantine is in place to help prevent other communities like, um, Albany or Roseburg from getting infested soon. Trying to spread out the timeline and the infestation across the state. So we want to make sure all this infested ash material stays within the quarantine. Uh, one last slide before we move into questions. We'll be sharing this presentation with everybody. One of the last slides, slides in the presentation has a great list of resources, including information you can share with the citizens of Woodburn.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. Is there any questions from the council? So it looked like, I guess I do have a question. Do, do we have a sense of how many ash trees we have in Woodburn?
That would be the purpose of doing your tree inventory. Which I do believe Renata might have more information on. That is something that is going to be part of the grant ask, um, which is also through O D F, but it's a different, it's a different group in the urban community forestry. Um, after you have your inventory done, you will know the exact number you have. And whether or not you do your inventory over just park trees or park trees and your street trees, that will give you a better, um, basis to build your cost estimations off of.
So our concerns here in Woodburn are along Senegal Creek, Mill Creek and Pudding River. Which it looked like what you were showing on that one map, most of what you found so far is along the Pudding River. Am I correct there?
So far, yeah.
Yeah.
Visual survey.
I do want to add that that hasn't been a, a complete survey of that area. O D A found some trees in Woodburn and then moved on to a different spot because they were trying to determine how far it has already spread. So the surveying in Woodburn has not been very extensive.
Okay, thank you.
A, a quick question, Mr. Mayor. Does the Emerald Ash Beetle have any natural predators that we could invest in or?
Any birds that?
Birds? I, I don't know.
So yes, that's a yes and but kind of question. Three to five years after infestation, woodpeckers gradually learn that they can prey on ash trees to eat larv, live larvae. That takes three to five years and in no area has that been enough to actually fully suppress the beetle population. That only kind of knocks the top off of them. O D A releases a bio-control, though parasitic wasps. They have been tested in our region. They only target and only can survive in E A B, but you do have to know where E A B is. You can't just preemptively release it. Um, those controls actually, those trials actually started in two thousand and twenty-three and have been released. We're actually, uh, Matt and I were up early this morning collecting wood that we were going to, uh, test. So that again doesn't solve your problem, it just kind of knocks that top off. So it'll reduce the numbers of E A B in a population, but it will not eliminate them.
Well, thank you. I was just thinking how we're going to let the community know we're going to be releasing wasps into the. I do like the woodpecker idea.
The great news is they're tiny.
Yeah. That, that probably won't help, but I appreciate the point.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, Renata, it's all you.
Okay, Mayor, councilors, thank you. So when we first reached out to Department of Forestry, the city departments had numerous ideas on exciting projects that we wanted to use this funding source from. And it was in September that we learned about the E A B. So we have been, uh, moving quickly to respond and we had to drop several projects that we had originally anticipated in the application. I do appreciate O D F staff. We've called for several meetings for clarification and, and the Soil and Water Conservation District and, um, O D F sent staff out here for training, uh, of some of our public work staff. So we have been, all departments have been responding to this. The grant fund that O D F has opened is due tomorrow. There is no formal council action requested tonight because there's no match. Working with different departments and staff, what we're proposing. Working with different departments and staff, what we're proposing are four different tasks and I'll go over them briefly. There's $12 million statewide available. It is going to be competitive because we're not the only community, uh, impacted by this. And the cap is 750,000. We will be going on the high end because there's a lot of work that Woodburn needs to do to respond. Uh, this isn't on us to provide the complete response. Obviously this is a statewide issue, but what I've heard from O D F is they want to make sure that we are locally driving the process of how we want to respond. And it's, it's our involvement with the community to get that education out there. So we're trying to layer all of those pieces with the watershed council, the school district, the community events where we can help members get, or residents get that information out.
Renata, is Marion County working on this too? Seems like a lot of this property falls right in there.
The task force, um, that Matt mentioned will be, they will be serving on there. I don't have them listed as a partner. Um, we're working on that outreach and how we can overlap services, but, but of course, because this isn't our city limits. Yeah. So, um, just some quick links for council. What we're proposing is staff are four different tasks in response. Uh, the Pudding River Watershed Council, we were meeting before, we were informed on this. Uh, we've got a lot of projects. The city actually has a long history of partnering with them on, um, issues. We know that additional tree canopy, which you're going to hear a lot about because we're losing canopy, is, uh, important. So the Pudding River Watershed Council has identified Hermanson Pond. If you know the area, it needs more tree cover to address some of the issues there. And then north of Mill Creek, those are city managed properties where we can, uh, do additional plantings of species and canopy that we want to see. In order to keep costs down, uh, in order to address the work that we need to do, city staff, uh, has committed to Public Works and Jesse's Department that we will have a volunteer driven effort. Like we do on so many things in our community, but, uh, trees need to be purchased and Pudding River Watershed Council will be kind of walking hand in hand with us to, to do that effort. We have to try and show the state how we're working to, uh, work with our partners. Like you just asked me, you know, or suggested is like, everybody needs to work together to keep costs down so that we can address the other needs. So that's some, a riparian restoration and enhancement work. Uh, we do not have a tree inventory for Woodburn. We don't know the scale of the project or the problem because we don't even know how many ash trees. So it's very difficult to scope this funding application because we don't know the scale. But again, O D F has been assisting us with that process. We've done some small inventories in town, just pockets, but we need a complete inventory. And what we're proposing is city managed properties, city parks, and the public right of way. And the reason the public right of way is so important is oftentimes it's the property owners of budding that, that are responsible for those trees. We have a hazardous tree removal program, uh, through the planning department, but we need to be able to provide that information to our residents so that we know the scale. So while it may not be our responsibility to maintain or remove those trees, we want to know the scale of the problem. We want to inform people and we want to support our residents in addressing this cost that nobody really anticipated. Um, we do fortunately have programs here in Woodburn, like Jesse's Tree Giveaway Program, so that when folks are taking down trees, we can assist with a voucher program. We can't do this for them, but we can at least offer education and some funding assistance so we're not losing the canopy. Public Works also has a hazardous tree removal program with some funding assistance. And the council probably remembers that Planning recently did an update to their, uh, permit program for tree removal. As long as these trees are identified as ash, they are hazardous. That's proven. So that will be, uh, an approved permit through the planning department. So we've been having these conversations internally. But that's an impact to what we budget annually to provide support to our residents. So that's a second ask of O D F is a, a funding assistance so that we can increase those programs so we can assist our residents. The third program, I'm sorry, I missed a program. It was, uh, restoration enhancement at Mill Creek, the tree inventory, so that we can know the scale of the problem. Some funding to remove and replace those ash trees on our property so that we're maintaining as best we can the tree canopy. Task three is the tree giveaway program, hazardous tree removal program. And then four is response to E A B. And so the state has guidance on, um, what they are doing statewide for communities to respond to and mitigate E A B. But there's that locally driven process of do we have trees that we want to treat? Uh, there may be zero trees. There may be some heritage trees that we, you know, decide locally we want to try and preserve or extend the lifetime of those trees. So that's a whole other task. What are we going to do, um, for E A B response and management? Um, again, the application doesn't require city match at this point. Um, I don't think that we're going to get everything done for the funding award, even if we max that out. Um, it's competitive, but at least we have a plan and we've received feedback from forestry on what we're proposing. Um, it needs to include community outreach and education. We need to provide some support to our residents and then as a community for all of the property that we own, we need to manage our risk. Um, I don't know if Kurt has comments. He's been a great partner, him and his team. We appreciate that. They've provided a letter of support. That's important for the application. Um, that's what I have.
So the tree giveaway program is with Owls.
Yep.
They are aware that of the, the ash borer? They're not giving out new ash trees?
That's a good question. No, we won't be offering, we, we select new, um, different stock depending on what they're expecting to get in inventory. And so we select usually between four and six different trees annually. Sometimes there's repeats. Um, we'll ensure that ash isn't on the list, um, obviously. And I imagine they're not selling them at a frequent pace right now, so.
I know Department of Forestry and Ag is working with nurseries on this issue as well.
That was another question with all the nurseries around here that we need to make sure that we do our, okay. Kurt, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I just want to say hi. My name's Kurt Burning. I'm the executive director of the Pudding River Watershed Council. Grew up in Mount Angel, so very familiar with Woodburn. And if you ever visited the annex and talked to the engineers, we have an office right above them on the second floor, the, the little visited second floor of the annex. So come on by, you can see us. We really appreciate the partnership with the city of Woodburn for the office space. We've been trying for a while to work more on Mill Creek. Doggo was pushing me on it this summer and so that's why Renata and I started meeting. And then of course, as Renata said in, in the O D F meeting, they broke the news. It wasn't public yet that this had been found in the Woodburn community and we needed to respond. So, um, the good news for us is that, you know, they, they mentioned kind of the natural areas and the wildland urban interface and that's, that's all our work. So we're, we're not right of way experts. We're not, you know, arborists that will be working along I-5 or 990, that kind of thing. But hey, along Mill Creek, along Senecal, that's kind of what we do for a living. So we're, we're happy to be, be of use to the city as much as we can and help out.
Thank you. So next step is to notify our citizens?
Application submitted tomorrow. Yeah, I think education outreach needs to start immediately. I mean, we've already made contact with the school district. The next big community event as best we can within our capacity. Um, we want folks to be aware. And I'm hoping that, um, I don't know O D F's timeline, but the next time I'm here to discuss the issue, I hope to say that we announce that we've received an award and we can start that. Uh, we just, we don't know.
Certainly will be helpful.
They may need to scale our award. We're, we're going to ask for as much as we can get because there's a lot of work to do, but, um, we'll report back to you.
Who, it, who decides? Is this comes directly from the forestry department or from the state or?
So because we're helping people, um, receive funding, it wouldn't quite be above board for us to also decide who gets the funding.
That's unfortunate.
So we are creating, I know, right? Uh, we love everyone we've worked with and definitely, um, people have been being proactive about this. So we, your, your committee is going to be including experts of all different ranges because all of our projects are, they're compensating all sorts of different types of, uh, work. And then, uh, the committee is going to decide. So I hope everyone who applies gets their projects, uh, because that'll make E A B management for sure easier.
Well, thank you for your help.
I have a question for Kat. Um, is this like the end of the ash tree in, as we see it? Are, are they going to be like removed from the United States basically that we won't?
Actually functionally extinct, yeah. Unless the tree is treated with Memechtin benzoyate or a similar chemistry, it will succumb to E A B. And yeah, we are, we are going to lose E A B in our, our natural riparian areas and then it won't be available to us as a right of way or a street tree anymore either. So yeah, time to, uh, start focusing on what we can do to kind of spread that loss out over time. Costs are get spread out all over time as well. And then, uh, what we can start replacing those trees with.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for, uh, the presentation. Very informative and, uh, I think, yeah, it'll be up to us to do diligence and try and stay ahead of the game whichever way we go.
Thank you so much for having us. We'll see you in the, the next one.
Thanks for the opportunity.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
See y'all, thank you.
See you.
So at some point this will come back to us to decide treatment, removal, whatever.
If we're successful in the award, we'll, we'll brief the council on the programs and the award and the word contract and.
Certainly bringing someone on board. Inventory obviously is figuring out, yeah, this is very important. Okay. Moving on. Next up is business from the public. This allows the public to introduce items to the council consideration that's not already scheduled on the agenda. If anyone has, uh, an item they would like to talk about, comment time will be limited to three minutes. Does anyone from the public wish to come up and speak at this time? Seeing no one, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be adopted by one motion. Any item maybe we move for discussion at the request of the council? Uh, can we have the city recorder please read the items out loud that's on the consent agenda?
The items on the consent agenda are as follows. Woodburn City Council minutes of September 23rd, 2024, and building activity for September 2024.
Thank you. Any concerns? Anyone want to pull anything off? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I move to, um, approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second, Ed, uh, all in favor, second part of the night?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. We do not have any table business. Do we have a public hearing tonight? Moving on to general business. First item is council bill number 3263.
I'd like to introduce, um, council bill number 3263.
Thank you. Council bill 3263 has been duly introduced and is a resolution and as such requires one reading. May we please have the reading by title only if there's no objection?
Council bill number 3263, a resolution authorizing execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Woodburn and the Woodburn Police Association for a contract beginning July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. Um, do we have staff work?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of my responsibilities as city administrator is to oversee collective bargaining with the city's collective bargaining units. We've got different unions represented here in the city of Woodburn, Woodburn Police Association being, uh, one of them. Uh, I've often accomplished that by appointing the city attorney who traditionally has led the collective bargaining team on behalf of the city. Uh, Mel Greg, the human resources director, who is here tonight, also is on that team as well as Lieutenant Shadron with the Woodburn Police Department. I don't think Andy is here tonight. Uh, there, our team meets with the police association's, uh, bargaining team and they work through a variety of issues. I would say that the, the police bargaining is typically a little more complicated than other types of bargaining because we often factor in new laws, new case laws, and, uh, of course, the economic package associated with the W P A employment. The, uh, city has a very good working relationship with our union. I think, uh, it's fair to say that there's a lot of trust between labor and management in the city of Woodburn. We've worked hard at that over the years. I attribute a lot of that trust is to being honest. Uh, what you hear me say about the city's financial position is true. Uh, and it's the same thing I tell the Chamber of Commerce. It's the same thing I tell you at the Budget Committee. Uh, it's the same thing I tell the police union. It's the same thing I tell all our unions. Uh, we're very transparent in the financial management of the city and I think that bodes well for, um, being honest about, uh, what we value. Uh, we very much value our police department and we, and the W P A Association members. And this year I think represents, um, represents that value. The city has been in, has been in a, a better financial position for a variety of reasons. We could talk a lot about that. You've heard me talk a lot about that. I'm not going to regurgitate all, all that to you again tonight, although you know I like to talk about it, uh, as much as I can. Uh, but that did allow us, I think, to, uh, provide, uh, adjustments and compensation at 5% and then 4.5% respectively in the following years, which I think is, uh, better than what we've been able to do in prior years. There certainly have been years when we've asked the unions to give up things, where management has given up things in, in difficult economic times. And I think, uh, now that the city's in a position to do, uh, better than those times that, uh, we feel good about doing that. You also know we've invested in the police department. We've added police officer positions over the last couple of years. We've added programs in the last couple of years. And the police department has been very diligent at seeking additional funding opportunities for programs, uh, many of which you know about, that have been presented to you, that they're pursuing to enhance public safety in, in Woodburn. So with a growing police department, um, we want to be an attractive employer. We want to be an employer of choice in a field that's very difficult to attract. Um, it has not been easy to hire police officers for many years. Uh, every, every city will, will tell you that it's hard to hire and, and retain police officers. And we hope that, um, this agreement reflects the city's commitment to our police department and to public safety and our commitment to retaining quality and attracting quality police officers to serve our community. It is a very difficult job. It is harder all the time. I'm not going to go over everything or why it is hard. You watch the news like I do, you know, it's a very difficult job. And they, uh, our police officers serve, um, with distinction every day. And so we're, we're happy to be an employer of such a, a good department. And I can, I can tell you that I feel good about the economic package and I feel good about the details, uh, in the, in this agreement that we've reached with our association. And I'm happy to also turn it over to Mackenzie who led the bargaining as, uh, as you know, I used to sit at the table years ago and tell somebody told me it was a bad idea and they were right. So, um, I'll let Mackenzie talk about anything she wants to talk about. And then of course we have other, other members who, uh, were involved here. And I see that the chief and the deputy chief are also here as well.
Good evening, city council. Mackenzie Grant, I'm your city attorney. Um, you know, I'm probably going to echo a lot of what Scott just mentioned. Um, but you know, we go into bargaining with, you know, kind of our core team. So we have three people on our bargaining team, but that doesn't mean that we're not, um, supported by other staff outside of the room. So, you know, Scott is an instrumental member of our team, the police chief, the deputy chief, who are both here this evening, um, as well as, um, you know, we need our finance department and, you know, the senior finance management analyst position has been Karen. She helps present the budget to you guys. Um, she helps us run numbers and figure out, you know, what do we believe the city can afford within the budget that you have allocated for this year? But also looking at the five year forecast and how do, you know, the cola numbers and the financial package that we are bargaining toward is going to fit within the five year forecast? So like Scott mentioned, you know, we look at this, um, kind of pool of money, but then also think strategically about how we can, you know, implement premiums or incentives that are going to bring, um, excellent candidates to the Woodburn Police Department to work here. And how do we keep these excellent employees that we have currently? So you're going to see some new incentives or premiums that we built into here. One, because they're becoming more commonplace in other jurisdictions and we want to be a competitive employer, but also because we want to recognize the importance of things like education. So, you know, building in a premium for those that have associate's degrees or bachelor's degrees, um, is something that we prioritize in our bargaining. And also, you know, increasing some of the premiums and incentives for things like, um, sorry, I'm going to just want to look at my notes really quick. Uh, field training officers, um, who are the individuals who, you know, train our new employees. You know, they dedicate time and, you know, they. You know, they dedicate time and you know, they are, they've got that person stuck to their hip for nine months, 12 months and you know, they're training our new officers. And we want to make sure that we recognize how important that role is and to attract people within the department to be leaders and bring that new generation of police officers along and train them, you know, in the best way possible. So again, I don't want to go through every single detail of the contract, but I wanted to highlight a few pieces here. Again, saying thank you to our team. If there's anything else that our team members here would like to share, I'd be happy to. Anything else?
It's just very collegial and we all have the same goal in mind, both the unionists, to maintain and retain and attract the best employees so you can't just throw money and expect, so this is thoughtfully spread out. It's not just base pay, but the quality of the people we want to keep for future leaders of the department.
Yeah, we're very fortunate, like Mel mentioned, to have this collegial bargaining process that is not seen in some other cities or other departments. And again, we're working towards, you know, the same goal, but kind of how we get there is the bargaining process. We talked through a lot of these articles and spent a lot of time thoughtfully exchanging ideas on how we can get, you know, the best package that, you know, they think is the best package and the city thinks is the best package. Again, I'm happy to answer any specifics about the contract in detail. It would be helpful.
No questions?
No. Comments? I, like, I'm sure that the entire council has read the agreement and I can see a lot of work has gone into it. I appreciate a lot of the incentives too, keeping challenging force. And negotiations like this aren't always easy, but I appreciate the time and effort that went into it. So. Anything else? Then I would entertain a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Kentu?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Schaub?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Okay. Council bill number 3263 is passed unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to, we have a word of contract for a new transit vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back again, second meeting in a row with a transit vehicle purchase. The last one was a large vehicle, a large bus for our fixed route program. Tonight we're asking for authorization to purchase a minivan that has been modified to accept mobility devices and it is to be used for our out of town medical program. You may be familiar with this program. It was actually the program that Woodburn Transit was founded on back in the 70s, I believe. It's extremely popular. It provides trips to residents, to doctor's appointments that are not located in town where our traditional dial or ride program only serves appointments that are located at offices in town. And a lot of our users need to go to Salem, Portland and other areas for medical care. And so this is a critical vehicle to provide continuation of service there.
Do we charge for that?
No, we don't. It's free. We accept donations and we occasionally do get some from, from users, but this is a free program. And it's unique across the state. It's not something that I, I think you'll find anywhere else.
Interesting.
Yeah. Happy to take any questions.
So provides more access for wheelchair capabilities? Is that so we can haul more than, than one person at a time? Do we do that?
We typically don't because the location of the appointments is so specific. So if we have a, a customer that needs to go to OHSU, for instance, it doesn't necessarily work very well to combine those trips with somebody that needs to go to another facility, even in the area, because we don't know when that client's appointment will be finished. And so the driver will take them and then wait for their appointment to conclude and then drive them back. So it's a very customized door to door service.
So my obvious question is why do we need a bigger van with more access?
It's not a bigger van. We're replacing an existing van that's 13 years old and it's past the end of its useful life. So this is just a part of our regular program of making sure that our fleet's current and up to date. The existing van that's being replaced is just, the repairs have been frequent and, and costly. And I should mention that this, this purchase is funded by the statewide transportation improvement fund grant program, which is the, similar to the, the funding source, the same funding source that the other vehicle was largely purchased with. So it's that 1/10 of 1% transit tax that everybody, that employees pay and Woodburn's share of revenue from this grant program comes from payrolls that are generated in Woodburn. So those dollars that are generated here stay here and support Woodburn's local transit program.
Okay, thank you. Question?
I just had one question. In reading the packet, I noticed that the letter from Northwest Bus Sales said they were thanking us for the opportunity to participate for, for two ADA. Is that?
Very good catch. That was my question as well to our transit manager. I'm like, this says two. She says that was a mistake. It was, it's one van and it was a typo on, on their part.
Well, I just wanted, you know, to see if they were going to give us a discount or something.
Buy one, get one.
But I'm impressed you're reading the packet very thoroughly.
I did.
Any other comments, questions? Entertained a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of the 2024 Toyota Sienna hybrid minivan.
Second?
All in favor, seconded, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on. We do not have any other business. We do not have anything from the planning commission tonight. So moving on to the city administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, I just got a few things I'd like to report to the city council on. The first one is that we have the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference this week. I believe Councilor Wilk will be attending this year as well as a handful of staff. I want you to know that we've been honored and asked to provide a presentation statewide. There's upwards of 1,000 attendees this year, all from local government Oregon, but to present on our regional tourism program that the city provides. It's, it's been highlighted as a leadership program and a program worthy of presenting to other communities who might want to duplicate the effort based on the success Woodburn has had. And so that's really, really exciting and of course Jamie and Monticello have a, a lot of credit to that program and for, for making it work. Jamie will be presenting there as well, I understand. I think they've allocated six hours for that presentation. And then, and then also I want the city council to know that last March, the city had a delegation attend to Washington DC during the National League of Oregon Cities Conference and we, at the time, were lobbying for federal funding for a significant park project that would, is intended to enhance the proposed community center project. Out of that, there is a, a bill now that contains, I believe, $850,000 that's allocated towards that project. We would like additional federal funding to match that coming from the senate side. So we've discussed, we've discussed and looked at dates and we intend to go back to Washington DC to meet with our federal delegation, I think in mid, mid-November now. And our, our goal there is to lobby for additional fundings onto that bill to build support so that the appropriate senators who will entertain this legislation know that this is an important project and, and that we're, they're looking at them, letting them know that. And then also to, uh, bring to the attention other issues of federal concern that we're working on as well. And so I want the council to know that I intend, I've asked the mayor and I know that a few of the counselors are interested in participating in that. So, you know, we're finalizing some of the details, we'll be in, in touch. It's important, I think, that the community know that we're working hard to obtain every single dollar that we can get to be invested in Woodburn. The federal government will spend that money. We would like them to spend it here, as opposed to somewhere else. And then I also wanted just to quickly bring the council up to date on a particular issue we've been working on over, over time. And you, you may have read in an article, I think it was Willamette Week, week before last, the proliferation of human trafficking and prostitution that has infiltrated the massage business. The article I thought was poignant and talked mostly about Portland, but the city has been in a protracted discussion with the Oregon Massage Licensing Board over a particular business in Woodburn that was, that we were told by the state agency was providing prostitution with human trafficked individuals. We needed to, to investigate that particular site that ran into significant barriers of the exchange of information from that state agency and our law enforcement, primarily because of legislation that prevented them providing public records to other government agencies. And so I know that the issue has been brought forward. Woodburn is, I've been asked if Woodburn would sign its name onto a bill that the League of Oregon Cities has picked up primarily because of the Woodburn experience? And of course I agreed to that. And that bill has been, is supported by the Oregon District Attorneys Association and Oregon Sheriff's Association and Chiefs of Police Association. That bill would, would require other government agencies to provide government agencies with information through the public records request process, if not otherwise forthcoming. I think this is an important step and could have definitely helped Woodburn when, when we were trying to deal with that particular issue and to hold individuals accountable. And so I think that's a, a good thing that Woodburn has been able to leverage our experience into legislation that I think will help communities across the state further address the issue. More needs to be done for sure. The Oregon Massage Licensing Board, you know, needs reform so that they can better engage in criminality that they cross when in the course of their regulation of that particular industry. And it's unfortunate that there hasn't been more done to now to prevent the rapid growth and proliferation of such a horrendous, horrendous crimes that are committed in these places. So.
Scott, are you saying there's currently still one here?
No, Woodburn was able to resolve our issue and right now I, at least from my perspective, I haven't talked to police chief, but I, I'm not aware of any place in Woodburn now that is operating illegally. There was a, a one business that was quite a challenge for the city and for our police department to grapple with. It has, it's a very complicated issue. It's an issue of statewide concern. No individual law enforcement agency can particularly deal with the nature of how these businesses are structured, I'll tell you that. And, you know, we're talking about Portland having a hard time. Can you imagine the resources in much smaller communities like Woodburn where we, was very difficult? So, you know, it's a growing, it's an issue of growing concern. It's, you know, it is offensive and it is, you know, it is a question of, of moral concern, I think, for every community that has these businesses that are providing these illegal services with human trafficked individuals. I hope that more attention can be brought to it, but I am, I am happy to tell the city council that the League of Oregon Cities has picked this up and is trying, trying to deal with a specific issue that we, we struggled with. And I think that in the scope of saying should be a success. I hope it gets passed. I fully intend on talking to the legislature about our experience in detail. I know there are legislators who are concerned and would like to see more done about the issue. I think we certainly would too. Human trafficking is, you know, a scourge and with our farm working community and our migrant community and, you know, it is, it is very problematic and it's, you know, it's something that, you know, demands action. So happy to share that with you. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, very informative. Counselor Cornwell? Counselor Schaub?
I'm really pleased to hear that about LLC taking that up because I was very concerned about the human trafficking part of our experience and never getting any answers.
Specifically, Counselor, the, the city was told that the state had evidence that these crimes were occurring. We asked for the evidence so that we could launch an investigation. We were denied access to that. There were statutes that were pointed to saying that that information was protected as a course of their agency's work. We filed the public records requests, we were denied. We had to hire a third party attorney to ask for that information because they were not a government agency. You know, it cost us resources and time to get the information we needed, we felt we, we needed to address the issue in our community. And there's legislative fixes that need to happen here so that local governments can be more effective at getting information from the state when they're in possession of criminality in our communities.
Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to say is Counselor Wilk, I'm so pleased that you're going to be attending the LLC conference. It's something that, it's an event that I've always looked forward to. Unfortunately, I can't go this, this time, but it's a great opportunity to meet with other counselors and mayors from our 242 cities that we have in Oregon. So congratulations, have fun.
It is a good time. Counselor Wilk?
So I appreciate the opportunity. I just want to say that I think we all should recognize that our administration goes a long way in providing support for all staff here that work in Woodburn and among other things to, to attend this conference and, and present and, and gain valuable information. I also appreciate, Scott, you bringing forth the, the issue about human trafficking here in town. And so I just wanted to remind folks that we do have nonprofit, nonprofits at work here in Woodburn as well, trying to combat and provide support for victims and survivors of human trafficking and in particular, the Center for Hope and Safety that, you know, for many years was only in Salem. And again, due to the hard work of the city to bring other entities here to provide services. They do have an office on Cascade Drive and they're providing excellent work here as well.
They're coming to our next meeting. I think they're on the agenda for our next meeting.
Great. I also wanted to recognize that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have a large indigenous, indigenous population here in Woodburn and last year the city did adopt a proclamation recognizing the second, second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
I think you did one last.
He, he did.
We did it here, yeah. We did it, we did it this year.
Oh, I missed it.
Yeah.
But I'm here now. And that's.
But thank you for bringing that up. Good points. Counselor Kentu?
No updates, just it was a great meeting. I continue to be shocked myself at the things that I get educated here about and it's, it's great to learn all the things, so.
It's the only beginning.
Yeah.
Counselor Morris? You have anything?
I have no, I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one thing I'd like to say is citizens of Marion County got their voter's pamphlet this, in last week and ballots are coming out, I believe it's next week, so I'd like to remind everybody to vote. One, some things I noticed in the, the voter's pamphlet, Woodburn's bond measure number 24 504, there were 19 letters in support of that with over 90 people endorsing that. So I'd like to thank those people that, that wrote the letters and endorsed that. But I also really would like to know, at the beginning of the, of that segment was a very good explanatory statement that was put together by our city recorder. And it was a, I'm sure with some legal help, but very good statement explaining what that bond measure is. It had to be very, obviously very neutral, but I thank you Heather for seeing that got in and keeping us legal. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you.